Only we could just go from the room to the room like what you used to do when we were all in person. Nancy, since this is a joint meeting, is it kicked off by planning zoning or by the transportation advisory committee?
This particular meeting is, even though it's a joint meeting, is being hosted by Planning and Zoning Commission. There will be a second joint meeting and it will be hosted by the E-TAC Commission.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing Michelle yet.
I'm here Nancy, I'm just under Public Works.
I'm sorry, I met Michelle Austin, our chair for Planning Commission, sorry Michelle. Judy, since I'm not seeing Michelle, she may be still trying to reconnect. Do you want to kick off the meeting?
I don't have the agenda in front of me, I apologize, but.
No, it's okay, it's just gonna be roll call and then we'll turn it over to our. So Ms. Donaldson?
Here.
Mr. Hagerty?
Here.
I don't see Michelle yet. Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Fuller? Ms. Lipowski is absent, Mr. Atkins?
Here.
Kate Townley is absent, Carl Adams?
Here.
Brenda Hubka? Okay, and then for our Transportation Advisory, Neil Sarno? Neil, can you come off mute?
Yes, yes, thank you, yes, present.
Thank you, and actually if all of the commissioners could be on camera, that's a requirement of the city attorney. Tiffany O'Connell? Okay. Tim Whitney?
Present.
Thank you, Chris Dietrich? Right? Greg Naddison?
Here.
Patrick Lewis? Okay. Let me see, yeah. Okay, since we're not conducting business tonight with any votes, I think we'll be fine, but we do not have a quorum of both commissions combined, so. At this point, John, I think it's over to you. John Vogel.
Yes, so, yes, so, so we've been successfully implementing a number of projects in the city since our original walking wheel master plan was produced back in 2015. We had some pretty good wins on particular corridors such as Dartmouth and Oxford, which were very high profile but very busy automobile type streets and we've, there are also regional routes connecting Denver east and west of us. And so those were the ones we wanted to address first. We've also done some other things like Clarkson, we're also working on Zuni with Denver right now. However, some of this, we've also kind of experienced kind of a slowdown in that and the fact that some, for some years, there was other priorities and there's always so much consulting money and we just didn't have a lot of free dollars to continually plan for other corridors. And I think there's a desire now from multiple departments in the city manager's office to to be able to better program those dollars into the process and also get an idea of what these corridors that high priority corridors might cost and maybe even develop a kind of a schedule for those, which we didn't have, we don't have that before and it might be help the staff follow that a little bit closer. And so the city manager's offices offered us some more additional funding to do an update of the walking wheel plan. It's going to be a fairly short process. We expect to wrap this up here this fall and then probably go through the approval process just before Christmas with both the commissions and then on to council in the beginning of 2022. And Chris Vogel saying at OV Consulting has already begun working on the project. They had, they were at the Inglewood Block Party last Saturday and collecting feedback from the citizenry that stopped by the booth. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Vogel saying and Kevin Rangel of OV Consulting to inform us what they found in their original analysis they've done in the last few weeks.
Awesome, thanks John, it's good to see everybody, thanks for taking the time and for agreeing to a joint meeting. It really helps us kind of connect with all of you at the same time and maybe we can brainstorm a little better together. John's owner and the planning engineering interface and I was the project manager of the 2015 plan. So if you have any complaints about that plan, I'm the right guy to talk to. So, so as part of this, I'm going to. Let me share my screen if it works here. Great. I'm just going to go through a few things, first I just wanted to to give everybody just a quick overview of our time together tonight and I don't think it'll be an hour and a half, but it's as much time as you all want to kind of discuss and talk about. But first, I'm just going to give you a real high overview of what we're trying to do with this update. John kind of gave a quick piece, let me go a little more detail, giving overview of schedule and process. And we did have done some pretty good work on looking at the 2015 plan, developing lists and maps of projects and identifying what's completed and what's outstanding, so I want to share that with the group. One of the interesting things about our process is this piece, so Councilman Joe Anderson in District Three had, was one of the folks that was kind of instrumental and funded for this update. And John and I spoke with him about, you know, what he was thinking when he was kind of thinking he wanted to do this. And one of the things he was talking about was a concept called the 15 minute city and the idea there is, can you, you know, walk or bike to things that you need within 15 minutes of where you live, right? And we kind of look at two areas, look at a five minute walk and a 15 minute walk. So we've done a baseline analysis of that, I don't want to share with the group, it's kind of interesting to see how the cities laid out land use wise and sort of critical services. Give you a little, I just want to share some photos, tell you what we heard of the public event. And then the main thing, so I'll go through these, these pretty quick so that we're, you know, able to spend time, happy answer any questions, I step right now, I'm going to go through the schedule as we're going to start thinking about prioritizing, like how should we think about these projects that are left? And, you know, what's important, what are the, how are we going to figure out what are the top 10, top 20 things that we'd like to accomplish in 2023, 2024? Okay, so that's, that's an overview of our time tonight, I can come back to this at any time. Let me grab, let me pull this up now and I know you're probably all on small screens, but I will read things to you, so, it's a lot of words and John, I think what I'd like to do, if we can, is I'll put a packet of this information together that we can provide to planning and zoning and E-TAC as well, so after the meeting they can kind of go through this stuff at their leisure, does that work John and Nancy? Yeah.
Yes, actually, if you could email this all to me, I have to attach it to the tonight's agenda for the public as well.
Super, yep, I will do that.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks Nancy, okay, so basically, in a nutshell, what we're trying to do is update the 2015 plan, it's been six years, a lot has changed. The goal is to create a list of tangible and a few projects, so things we can actually plug into the budgeting process for implementation, right? So the city manager Sean is really clear, like I want to know what the top priorities are, what they cost, so I can program them into our budget and start moving towards getting things done. So that's, that's really like nuts and bolts. Key steps, I've kind of bolded the main things here, so engaging you all throughout the process. You're one of our big sounding boards here, representing Inglewood citizens and process to help us get input. Summarize the success, what have we achieved? Identify outstanding recommendations, we'll go through that. Develop the baseline evaluation of the 15 minute city, so really the test there is what does Inglewood look like today? And then that gives us a good springboard for a later time to talk about what should change in Inglewood to make it a better 15 minute city. Get a list of recommendations, prioritize them and give you all cost estimates so that we can budget and move forward. So that's an overview of what we're trying to do here. The schedule. Just pull up here. Okay, and I made it big, so I'll scroll through so you can see, but this is our current schedule. We started, we had our kickoff on August 26th with Public Works and Community Planning and Development. Also have interfaced a little bit with parks about, about things with their South Plate River study and all that. Where we are now is this first yellow highlighted piece, we're having this joint meeting. We've completed our existing walk and wheel plan review and our 15 minute city baseline evaluation and we've been to the Inglewood Block Party and that was our, for this group to know because of our budget constraints, so that was our main public public touchpoint. And John and I are talking about putting some materials on the website and maybe some survey and things that would be cost effective to get some more input as we go forward, but that's, that's where we are. What happens next, we come back to you all on October 15th, I think it's an E-TAC meeting, led meeting that Planning and Zoning attends. And there we're going to talk about project prioritization, so I'm going to share with you what our initial thoughts are, what are the, what are the top top things we're trying to achieve, so that'll be then. Then we'll go and do all the other stuff, cost estimates and get documentation going, but really what gets interesting here is we start the city council process in mid-November. We have a planning and zoning hearing that we've currently planned for December 7th, so we'd be back to you in an official capacity, John will be leading, kind of leading that charge, planning and zoning finding and facts, December 20th. And then City Council Public Hearing, early February. So that gives you a good framework moving through things, so the bulk of the work that I'm doing will be done this year, right? And then the process will continue into early next year. Are there any questions about, about the purpose or the schedule from anyone? And if not, that's okay.
I don't see any hands, Chris, you should be good.
Okay, good. Yeah, okay, so, the next thing I wanted to share is what have we done since, since 2015? So I have a few support materials that kind of go with that and I'll explain what we're looking at here. And so, so we went through the, actually, let me show you this first. Okay, so we went through the, the walk and wheel plan and the 2019 South Pat Study because they have pedestrian bicycle rec. Issues in there as well, and these projects, and we broke them into bicycle, which is shown on the sheet, and pedestrian projects, pedestrian oriented projects, which is shown on this sheet. So you can see there, there are quite a few, we identified 33 separate pedestrian projects and some of those are long corridors, like maybe Lottie or Fox, right? And, or like Kenyon, number 18 here, Kenyon Avenue Pedestrian Improvements, and that would include a lot of blocks of things. The bicycle projects, we identified 31. And then, you know, so this is a nice cheat sheet for, for like all the projects, now they come together. And then we, we took that and we developed, I'm going to zoom in a little so you can see a little more of the numbering and stuff. And I'll explain the coloration, so, and we developed a map in GIS and put alignments in and IDs, right, so the numbers tied back to the list I just showed you. And the colors, what those mean is green means that we did it, we got, we got that recommendation done and blue means we still are working towards that recommended. Okay, and what you, as we look through, we'll set some apps a little bit here, is we did pretty well at the high priority bicycle projects, I think. So John had alluded to Dartmouth, Clarkson, Oxford. You know, those, those pedestrian, those bicycle projects got implemented and we had a lot of other ones left here, so like this, this line right here, this is the rail trail that is such a high priority for everyone, we've heard a lot about and so, so we have that, there's a Mary Carter Greenway improvements that are left to do down here. Number 32. This is south, that exists through, through neighborhoods here and then when the rail trail gets done, we're like, hey, let's connect it up to the rail trail. And then, and some of them are, so like this 23. So that's a little funny, right, so we have Big Dry Creek Trail exists already, what this project was, was a wayfinding signage project, right? It was, how do we, how do people find their way around and in fact, at the public open house, I talked to a lady who works south of Bellevue and lives up here. And she didn't even know, Big Dry Creek Trail went to the Mary Carter Greenway, right? Wasn't, wasn't apparent to her, so there's a lot of improvements there, there to be had in, in that, so. The, the other map we'll produce for this eventually is, we'll do things by project type, if that makes sense. So this is more like project status, right, and just giving us a sense of where we're going. So that's bicycle and then pedestrian, I'll stay zoomed out a little bit so you can see a little more of the city, but we had identified actually quite a few pedestrian priority corridors, we called them. In the 2015 plan, there were areas where we wanted to focus on making sidewalk improvements or crossings of busy intersections or those sorts of things and so like, I'll zoom in here a little more and, and they're pretty long and the, right, to be honest, the recommendations were a little nebulous, right, it's like improve sidewalks and make it better. So I think as part of this update process, what we've been talking as trying to give those a little granularity. So for instance, right, so this is, this is Fox and Elottie Street, right, right through the heart of our downtown, we just formed our advisory committee, right, and we want to make things happen. So this is pretty nebulous, but there's certain things that we might want to focus in on like crossing, you know, crossing of Oxford. Like, can we make better, let's, let's find some key improvement, maybe we'll separate those out, so I'd love some input on that as we go through, because if we just say, make Fox better, that's really hard to make happen because it's, it's sort of too big and too fuzzy, right? Okay, so, so as we shown here, and you can see in this map, there really is very little grain, I mean this east side of the, the platform, this trail, South Oxford to Union, that's about the only thing that we could find and so something else to think about. I'm going to, I'm going to just pause for a second and I want to ask if anybody has questions, I see Colin, you have your end up.
Colin does.
Yeah, I appreciate this information, it looks like there's a lot of overlap obviously between the walking and the, and the biking side of things, so are we thinking that that would be in the street and then on the sidewalk? Are they going to try to be a combined trail and then would that be an overly sized facility? And then also, I'll ask a couple of questions and let you go through. Them are disconnected, so like 10 kind of ends the park, you know, would that be connected? And, and things like that, and then the final one is, you know, I mean Sheridan's nice and all, but why are we proposing stuff in Sheridan? You know, I like the rail trail, that, that one I think is like everyone's priority, but you know, why are we looking at stuff outside of our city before we combine what's in our city?
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, great, couple, couple insights to that, I think. So a couple of these, so like project 10 here, that, that's a wayfinding project, not a specific like infrastructure project, so that's why it looks kind of discontinuous. You are right, there is a lot of overlap between the pedestrian and the bicycle corridors. And when we did the walk and wheel plan in 2015, that was sort of on purpose, we wanted to create multimodal centric like spines, right? So like Sherman Street would be a great example, so Sherman Street is parallel to Lincoln, it's narrow, it's a pretty good candidate, safe for a neighborhood bikeway kind of treatment, right? Some traffic calming and those sort of things, and that makes things better for pedestrians and bikes and everybody, so there's there's a lot of overlap, that's one thing, a lot of the same quarters are called out, so that's, that's one thing. The other thing about the boundaries, there are a few, a few things here, I think, are you, I mean, are you referring to like, so this Mary Carter Greenway piece, right? So we put that on because the South Suburban Park and Act folks did that South Pat Plan and I don't know if we would prioritize this, I think it's just something that was in a plan that's sitting there. And this is being led right now by Denver, actually, so Denver, I believe John, is taking the lead on making some improvements on Lowell from Oxford South, right? He's going to unmute any second and give us his wisdom.
Yes, so Denver is, so the, the Lowell Corridor, actually Littleton has bike lanes actually all the way down from south, from, you know, like Bowles all the way up to that end point just north of Bellevue, a little bit down, right there, a little bit higher up to the black line, right there, that's about where they stop. And then Denver is coming in and looking at their corridor from the north and it does touch us for a couple of blocks, but we've reviewed their plans and feel good about it and we expect them to take the lead because they have the bulk of the corridor on Lowell, so that's, so we will, we probably won't prioritize that as are taking the lead for that for Inglewood.
Gotcha, thanks.
Be working on.
Thanks for the background, John, and then, and then some of these other projects were really about, so we have this piece of Inglewood that's really separate, make them connected, ended up sort of going out of our boundaries and they're really out of our control, so you make a great point Colin, that they're sort of in our plan as something that we'd like to see happen and I think the process there is working with the other agencies to see if there's things that they can do and maybe we can collaborate on, right? Was, I think that was all the questions, did I miss one? Okay, great.
We have, we have Judy.
Okay, hi Judy.
Could you go over to the pedestrian project map?
Sure, here we go.
Um, so, one of, I think, so of course I live on the south of Hampton, so we had a meeting about what we're, and people think that I just want to have parking, which is not true, what I want is a, a way for people to safely navigate from the south side of Hampton up to what we are now calling, you know, the main city center. So I can understand why people chose Fox in Elottie because they are one of the few through streets. The other one that I think should be addressed is Jason and let me explain and, and I know that this is not in your plan, but we just did a big PUD and there was a lot of community comment for the people who live on Jason, so that's over by Sports Authority. It was right next to Sports Authority, so the people who live near Dartmouth and Jason are just beside themselves, south, go south.
Oh, sorry, Dartmouth's up here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Oxford, I do that all the time, I live near there, you think I could do, say the alphabet.
Near the rec center.
So they, they are really, and I think that is a good place to consider if we could calm the traffic for them and make that Jason more of a focus for walkability, you would solve a couple of problems, the people just north of Oxford on Jason are really upset about the amount of traffic that goes because everybody who wants to avoid that, that, right, that intersection goes on Jason and then cuts across over to Santa Fe with their cars. And then they're building more and more multifamily housing, so anyways, I would like to consider that from Oxford to, I know we're going to have the rail trail, but I'm telling you, people aren't going to walk on that. But people will walk from Jason Park, from Rotolo Park, because I live right near Rotolo Park, just cut across the park to Jason and head right downtown would make a much more reasonable walking, biking route for, and you have the rec center right there too. In my opinion, Jason makes In my opinion, Jason makes a million times more sense. Um, to get people, you'll reduce traffic for the people who live on Jason. But you also have, um, the people who are gonna now be in those. Uh, multifamily housing have a safe way to get across Hampton. So that's just something that I didn't see on here that I think would address, um, some issues. And then also seventeen, what is that? Bannock? To the people who live near Broadway, because again, you can't, you don't want to walk on Broadway. It's just not safe. Um, the sidewalk suck, it goes on and on. So I would just like to make a pitch for Jason before. Um, whatever, it's not, you have Fox.
Before Fox, I got you.
I think Jason solves a lot more, um, public opinion problems right now than Fox might.
Okay.
So I just wanted to throw that out there.
That's great. So things have changed since twenty fifteen, right? So go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say our public works director, uh, Maria DeAndrea, uh, has some comments or questions.
Oh, great.
Yeah, thanks. Um, sorry, my computer isn't working. There we go. I just wanted to respond to those comments, or those questions about Jason. So. We had, well, the city recently completed a traffic study. And both the volumes and the speeds on Jason between Oxford and Mansfield are actually at or below the, um. Average speed. So the average speed there, both northbound and southbound is around twenty-four to twenty-five miles per hour. So there is no speeding problem along Jason. Um, similarly, the, and, uh, folks from community development can weigh in on this, but the recent development that was approved. Or is in the process of going through the approval process is. Can, uh, going to construct a number of walkability improvements. Both at Mansfield and in the middle section of Jason Street. Um, in order to improve that walkability over to the rail trail. So I just wanted to mention those things.
Great. Thanks, Maria. Yeah, it's good. Did I, I wasn't aware that you guys had done a traffic study there. So that's, that's good information to have. Um, to the Jason corridor and like getting across Oxford, I think that's totally reasonable that we should take a look at that. And, um, no, we did this in twenty fifteen. Things have changed a little bit in terms of where land use has developed and things. So that's great. Colin, I see, is your hand still up or you have a new hand up?
One quick question follow. When did, um, Bannock get changed to a one-way? Has that been since twenty fifteen? Or has that been, um, that way for a while?
Before twenty fifteen and before, before my time.
Okay, so that wasn't, so I guess I want to make sure that that was in the understanding when you were picking Bannock initially that, um. For some reason, I thought that was a newer development that had been turned to a one-way. So, um, this. Just making sure that that information is there because I didn't realize until not that long ago. So.
Yeah, I think it was, um, I, I don't know the whole history, but, um, your, your former public, public works people, I think this got changed.
Uh, Bannock Street is kind of a legacy that, uh. Probably, probably was, uh, turned into a one-way street, I'm guessing back when. Two eighty-five was constructed in its form, current form today. And that was probably back in the sixties, most likely. Um, and, uh, I think the people, what I was told by one of the former engineers, uh, Lad Vostry is that. Uh, people like it that way and they really don't want to change.
Yeah, right. But for pedestrian traffic, of course, it's two-way, right?
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, so we were, we were thinking, I mean, I, I get, I think one of the things in the plan, like we were a little maybe tone deaf to what happens right here. Right at that intersection. Um, but now that we're getting the, you know, this, this project improvements here, maybe we would modify that and come over, right? And this will be. A much. Safer pedestrianing out today's. Um, Maria, is your hand up again?
Yeah, just a comment on that. So I think, um, as you mentioned, yeah, we need to look at this in relation to what that, what happens at Hampton there, Bannock. But as far as the one-way traffic movement and to answer your question, member Hagerty, I'm not sure of the timing, but we are going to reevaluate that. The reasoning for the one-way street section and the one direction and do some analysis of that in, uh, twenty twenty-two.
Awesome. Good to know. Okay, are there, um. So I know this is a, this is kind of a lot and taking, so when we read through the walk and wheel plan and we did it, um, finding all the projects. Um, and making sure we put them on the map is actually, um, was a, a pretty big process. And so I think this would be a good tool going forward. We'll share this out, um, so that you guys can take a look and, and give us any input again. So you don't have to give it all now, but if there are any other questions or comments, um, before we, uh, move to a fifteen-minute city, uh, based on.
I had a question on.
Sure.
I got a question on the, uh, you, you, you gathered information from the, uh, block party and that's one of your major, um. Residents, so residential contacts. So do you have that available? Do you have that sorted out yet or?
So I, I have, um, it's a little later in the agenda. I do have a public event summary, um, that I'll share in just a, a few minutes later on in the agenda. I can tell you at a high level, like we, we talk to a lot of people, um, but not a lot of people had really specific input for us, right? Um, and so, and then some folks, uh, signed up for our sort of contact list and they wanted to take a look online and take their time and. And give us thoughtful comments. So that's one of the reasons John and I are talking about getting that, that web, those web materials up and. And reaching out to folks that way too. Um, but I, I'll go through a little bit more of a summary of what we heard and. Um, in just a minute, if that's okay. Is that okay, Carl? Okay, I see you shaking your head. Um, is there anybody else?
That's, that's fine. I, I just.
Go ahead. Sorry.
I think.
Okay, Chris. Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure if maybe I was cutting out or something, but, um. Sounds like everybody could hear me fine. Okay, so we can come back to all this stuff anytime. Um, let me, um. Let me share with you some interesting, um, some interesting mapping we've done, okay? So I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave this a little high level and then I can zoom in and out as if you guys want to look at things specifically, but. So this is, everything I'm sharing tonight, by the way, was shared at our public event as well. So I wanted to be consistent across. So this was, um, a new thing that we didn't do really in the, uh, twenty fifteen plan. Um, uh, is kind of looking at what's, what are the, you know, what are the land uses in the city and how easy is it for people to get around? And so what this shows on, on this top left, this is sort of a combination of all the, um, five-minute walk sheds, okay? So we pick different land uses that are important to a fifteen-minute city evaluation. That's employment. Um, government facilities is right here. Grocery stores is here. Uh, bottom left is medical services. Uh, right here is schools. This is try high for high frequency transit, so thirty minutes or greater, um, headways, right? Um, and this is parks and open space. So we took a look at each of those land uses, um. And I should explain the, the, um, employment map's a little different. So the employment map isn't a walk shed. It's more of a location of employment and size of jobs, okay? So that, just to give us a sense of where jobs are in Inglewood and how, how many. All the other ones, uh, these circles represent a five-minute walk, um, from the center of each of those land uses out, okay? And I'm gonna zoom in a little more so we can take a look at the overall, which I think is kind of interesting. So this purple, uh, right here, so this is an overlap of all those ones I just shared. And the denser the purple, the more, um, of the critical land uses are within five minutes of walking, right? And so you can see is, you know, we have pretty good coverage, uh, in the city. We have some really good density. Um, right near our, uh, city center, which is, uh, probably not a surprise to anybody that knows Inglewood. Be well, um, with Broadway right here and Hampden. There's a lot of uses right around here. Um, and then we have a, you know, we have a decent, uh, piece in the south, um, that's missing a few things. Uh, one of the key findings that I found interesting, um, was the grocery store, right? So five-minute walk isn't, isn't very far. That's a pretty close. Um, you can see, you know, we have, we're kind of clustered with grocery stores. And I want to, I want to compare this for you. I put them both at the same scale so they'd be easy to see. So this is five minutes, right? And then we also did fifteen minutes. So if you walked for fifteen minutes from those land uses, what does it look like? And you can see. You know, Inglewood gets pretty, uh, pretty walkable, um, in a fifteen-minute radius from everything. One of the things we saw with the grocery stores was there is a, you know, we do have a gap kind of in the middle of the city here. Where you're not within a fifteen-minute walk if you live in this southern area, um, of a grocery store. Um, but everything else, we have pretty good coverage, um, coverage in the city. So I thought that was pretty interesting. And. What it's going to be used for, so, um, councilman said one of us to get a baseline to say, do we have a fifteen-minute city already? Uh, where can improvements be made? And we are gonna try to use this as one of our prioritization factors. Um, when we. Look at improvements to, you know, they were, uh, we have a lot of land use to. We would like to look to us to, um, to focus in on. The other way to think about it is maybe there's areas where we have. Of things and people need better facilities to be able to walk further. So. I want to share that with the group and then get any, uh, questions or input. I see Greg, give your hand up.
Uh, yeah, my question was just about the, um, like in particular, the grocery stores. Um, I was curious if you looked outside of the boundary of Inglewood and where the grocery store might be.
Yeah, that's a great, great question. So this data set is inclusive of inside Inglewood only. And so you're absolutely right. So we could have a grocery store out just outside the boundary, right? Say in Denver or something. Um, and it's really more, uh, this map really kind of points it out. So. Um, this, this sort of area down here, I think it's pretty unlikely, um, that we'd have a fifteen-minute walk shed, right? That would cover that. But up here and then in the northeast corner, um. Uh, we look at us, that'll be our next step, I think. Um, John and I were talking about pulling in some data from the surrounding jurisdictions. To give us a better, a better decision-making picture.
Yeah, like the, the Downing and Evans, um, King Supers, I think would cover some of those folks up north. And then the super target over in Sheridan, like over here, sort of in that middle, yeah.
Yeah, the trick here is so these are pretty dumb circles, right? So these are just a, a radius right now. And so of course we have a huge barrier right over here and, and walking to that, that's a target is difficult. And I think that'll be the other thing we look at is. You know, as we, as we sort of would dig deeper into the fifteen-minute city, it becomes more root-centric, right? Sorry, Greg, I think I cut you off. Go ahead.
No, you're good.
Okay. Um, yeah, so that was, that was a pretty good, um, little exercise. I think it gave us a better understanding of. What Inglewood's like today, um, in terms of walkability. And, uh, in terms of this project, the scope, really what we're doing here is we're just setting the existing baseline. So we just wanted to understand what's going on. Um, and then there could be a future phase of this, uh, depending on councils, uh, funding appetite and everything that would take it further. Um, and do more of a future analysis, where should we, nor their land uses we're missing and those kind of things, um, take it further. But as far as for our scope, really it's ending at what does the city look like today? Okay. Okay, so that's, that's fifteen-minute city. I really liked, I liked that exercise and I've been working in Inglewood for like fifteen years and it gave me a better. Understanding of, especially, you know, we, we, um, we tend to focus in, in, in what I call the heart of Inglewood, right? That Hampden area. And this like southwest part and the very south Broadway part, we have to remember, like bring all that stuff back in and, and this northwest too, right? Like you head out Dartmouth and go north on Zuni and we have this whole area of Inglewood that we want to make sure we connect back to everything they need. Okay, so now back to Carl's question about the, um, public event, right? So I'm gonna just share just for fun, um, I'm gonna pull up just a few photos. That we had, um. At the event. So, so we were, I, I think we were like C seventeen. Anyway, we were right across from, I should have pulled that one up first. This, we had a, um. Band out front of our, um. We had a band out front of our, um, our tent for quite a while. So we were right in front of, uh, McMullins. Um, and these guys were actually pretty fun and great. There was a lot of energy. There were a lot of people there. Um, it was actually really well attended. Um, this is what our booth looked like. And, and like I said, so you can see, you know, we had those fifteen-minute city maps. We had the bike and ped maps and then. Um, down in here, we had the project listing and, and one other thing that I want to share with you, which is our priorities, prioritization factor boards. Um, so it was good. And then my, um, my colleague who's on, um, was on this call too. So Kevin talked to a lot of people. Um, and, and got a lot of, uh, good insights. So Kevin, I thought, um. Maybe kind of share, we had, we had fifty-nine people we talked to. So that was pretty good. I mean, that's probably more than we'd get at a public meeting. Um, showing up. Not everybody was super, you know, they were kind of shooting the breeze with us. Um, uh, in my, in my interactions, the top things that came up where people are interested in were the rail trail. People were really interested in getting that rail trail taken care of. Um, some pedestrian improvements across major intersections, wayfinding. Uh, people had a lot of questions about walking and biking around town and, and how do I get to different places? Um, and a few more specific things, um, we had a few people that were really interested in the little Dry Creek Trail that exists today. And sort of personal safety and security issues, um, that they, uh, feel down there. They feel it's kind of like hidden in a little dark. And maybe there's some, some homeless activity or things that make them feel a little uncomfortable. Um, so we heard that a few times. Um, Kevin, I thought I'd, uh, passed you and say, what, what else did you hear?
Hey, thanks, Chris. Yeah, um, one of the recurring comments that we also heard from a lot of people was, um, a request for better east-west connections. From Inglewood to the Mary Carter Greenway into areas just west of Santa Fe Drive in general. Um, a lot of people mentioned that a lot of those crossings are pretty big and so they feel kind of unsafe and are harder to make. Um, and. Uh, as Chris mentioned, we had a lot of people in favor of the rail trail. That was definitely a priority. And we heard from one resident who lives next to the southwest ring belt. Um, they were mentioning that a lot of people walk in roots. So they're very much in favor of extending that trail.
Gotcha. My computer slid out. I was gonna show that, but yeah, we, you're right, Kevin. We did, um, we did get a lot of input that. You know, the only way from most of Inglewood over to the Mary Carter Greenway is through Oxford, which people don't like. And I know there's the, the P E L study, uh, going on there to look at improvements. That's a C dot let study that Inglewood's heavily involved in. Um, and then Dartmouth, you know, the, the little Dry Creek connection here and then Santa Fe, which actually, um. On the pedestrian project, um, map, one of the things I didn't point out. Um, was these projects fourteen and fifteen. These are, are some of the improvements that, um, maybe Maria or, um. Or John knows a little more, but essentially if you remember, there's this housing over here and there's like a social trail across the ramps. It's pretty unsafe and we've been talking about it for a while. It was one of the projects that came up in our plan as well. And I believe those improvements are being, uh, planned and designed now. Is that right, John?
Um, fifteen is part of the quick action projects that are, were identified in the US eighty-five P E L. So that one will likely be constructed as part of that project or, but I don't think we're in design yet.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks for, yeah, thanks for the, the process update. But it is, uh, you know, basically, you know, the way you get across. You know, you have to cross at busy places. And so people were really interested in, you know, why can't we go across? And why can't we build a bridge over here? And, and we talked about that in the twenty fifteen plan as well. And it just kind of fell off the list because it was just so, um, expensive and difficult. But maybe that's something that. You know, it's probably not achievable in like a city of Inglewood twenty twenty-three budget, but it's something that maybe you aspire to a, to a grant or a. You know, the, uh, sharing thing or something. It would be, I don't know, tens of millions of dollars, I guess. Yeah. Okay, um, so that, that's, that was in a nutshell. I think we were, you know, we were there from three till a little after seven o'clock. One thing has got a little rowdy and, um, we had, only had one interaction that was a little crazy. Somebody was really upset about, um. Oh, subsidized housing, I guess, is what they were, they were giving me. They, they, I could really understand. They had a few beers. oh subsidized housing, I guess, is what they were, they were giving me. They, they, I could really understand. They had a few beers. So I um, I'll try to pass it along to you guys as we kind of go through our notes, but I think they said there were some housing projects that they didn't, weren't in favor of. So that's our, our public, uh, public input. The other thing we did, other thing I wanted to share with you all was we had um we had this board. So at this point, I think I told you, we're gonna talk about, oh, Greg, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just on that last comment, I was curious where does Englewood have subsidized housing?
I don't know. They were, they were, he was like, all these projects going in for homeless people. That's kind of how he put it. So I didn't, I don't know. John, do you know anything about that?
Um, I, you know, the only thing that we have, there, we have the England Housing Authority. We have two uh, major senior housing uh properties. Um, and so I really do not know because I wasn't there and I didn't know, I, I didn't really hear the conversation. He could be talking about just initiatives of the city or uh the, that group that's in Englewood that's doing for the homeless, that, the group of churches. He may be talking about that. Or he may be talking about just in general apartment development in general, uh, but I really don't know.
Yeah, he wasn't super specific and um, and he had a nice dog that was with him, so. Okay, it was, it was a pleasant interaction. It wasn't violent or anything, but um, I just wanted to pass that along. So um
Wait, wait, Judy has her hand up Carl first and then I'll get to, then I'll get to you.
I just wanted to make a comment. They could be referring, I was on the Housing Authority before I came on planning and zoning and there are several tax credit. You know, housing that we've done that allow for what they call, refer to as workforce housing, so sixty percent of AMI. So there's one over um by uh Winslow Crane area and then the one right there on Broadway where um, you know, Zomo and the pharmacy and everything are on the bottom. There are some workforce housing units in there. So we have done some tax credit and I think people think those are subsidized. I mean, they are in some respects. They ta- accept section eight vouchers, et cetera. Um, people just don't understand and that's probably what they're, they may be referring to. Just wanted to give you that background.
Okay, Carl, sorry about that. Do you have some comments and questions on the, what Chris is presenting?
Yeah, one, it was mentioned in the last meeting that uh uh, the bike paths, there's, there's, there's a lot of bike paths like Dartmouth that's uh, what, what, what is the percentage of the plan that you have that would be between traffic and parked vehicles? To have a bike path there.
That's a good question. Are you, are you saying like what, like on-street type of facilities, like bike lanes? Where you'd be kind of out in this with, with cars, sort of?
You know, bike, a bike lane between live traffic and parked cars.
Gotcha. So I, I don't know the percentage exactly. Um, there are some uh recommendations in there that were, I think we called them at the time bikeways. Because we wanted to leave it open for what that might look like. So um, one of the things we looked at, Carl, was trying to make more high comfort, we call them high comfort facilities, right? And those are ones that are a little more separated from traffic. And they either uh take the, the um form of a shared use trail, right? Like the rail trail will be totally separated from traffic and you ride it. Um, or it takes the form of like uh vertical protection. So imagine a bike lane with some posts or things, right? That kind of give you that feeling. Um, so we haven't gone, we didn't go further on that because um at the time in twenty fifteen, Englewood was still thinking about bike lanes and where, where they'd want them and would they want them and, and all those sort of things. So we left it as bikeway. One of the other things um that I think we'd, we'd, we're talking about considering um would be neighborhood bikeway kind of, kind of things. And so you know how Maria was saying that they did the speed study on uh Jason uh, South of Mansfield. So you know, if you can get uh vehicle speeds down below twenty miles an hour, which is kind of desirable in a neighborhood setting, I think. Um, and you do that through various traffic calming measures, you know, that, that becomes a place where people feel pretty comfortable um moving around. So we, I think we're gonna look at that. Um, we're gonna look at all those type of things, Carl. And I think maybe when we come back to you, maybe it ties into my next thing pretty well. Um, which I won't go to you, but it ties into how we're gonna prioritize these, you know, what's important and things. So I see someone as guest, Nancy is, are you running the?
Yes.
The questions, okay.
Yeah. We show a guest, could you identify yourself, please? Ah, Chris, thank you. I'll rename you.
Oh, thank you. Yes, but I'm not on either committee, so I'm here just as a public member and I was hoping to put in a quick public comment uh before the number, before the meeting ended and I didn't know when would be the appropriate time, but it's related to all of this that you've been talking about. So maybe you could let me know when I could, when would be the appropriate time for me to dump in.
You're fine, Christine. Go ahead.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm so excited that you're redoing the walk-in wheel plan and giving it an update and a fresh look. Um, I wanted to say thank you for the Dartmouth bike lane and the Oxford bike lane. They are awesome. The difference of just having the lines there makes such an impact on safety. Um, I, I just hate being stuck in with the cars or crammed in between the cars and the parked cars. It is so darn scary. Think about bringing your kid on those streets. Um, so I love the actual bike lane. And my hope for when we redo the walk-in wheel plan is that it can include more bike lanes and less um shared lanes or sharos or bike boulevards. Those are better than nothing, but honestly, only barely better than nothing. Cars seem to completely ignore them. Um, to me, honestly, they seem like a way that a city feels like they're doing a lot for bicyclists without actually doing anything for bicyclists. I appreciate the slower speeds and so forth, but the difference between just having a bike lane versus not and cramming bikes in with the cars, the difference is enormous uh from a safety perspective and a comfort perspective. So to the highest degree possible, I'd love if you could include more bike lanes. Um, bike ways in the old plan, li- like, like you were saying, was kind of left vague. Uh, it'd be nice if we could specify some of those and take a look at which could actually acco- accommodate a bike lane. Whether that's skinny and shared with parking or, or wide, I mean, even skinny and shared with parking is a lot better than nothing. Um, and then um I would, I would love a, a more north-south bike lanes through the city or at least one big bike lane going north-south. Cause there doesn't seem to be, and I think the Sherman Bike Boulevard might be one, but I'd love a bike lane going the full length of the city. And um, one last comment for now, but maybe I'll send you some, some real nitty-gritty detailed comments. But the Little Dry Creek area right near downtown, um, that is just a little gem tucked right in there. But it's barely is because it's not connected to the other main bikeways of the whole city. So I would sure love if, if, even if it's in the medium term or long term, if that could be connected to the plat. Um, and connected to Clarkson. Um, maybe it is connected to Clarkson, but sorry, I'm not sure. Um, not just kind of weaving your way through a whole bunch of streets with right here and then left here and then right here and then straight here. But, but ideally a multimodal path, just like it is continuing all the way to the plat. And that would make it a whole metro ride region treasure rather than something that very few people even know is there. Okay, thanks for letting me squeeze in those comments.
Thank you, Christine. Um, just one, one uh, um, not responsible, want to comment on that. So it's funny, you said the Little Dry Creek Trail, so it is a gem and it is a really nice connection and it just goes nowhere, right? And so it does connect to Clarkson on, on the east end. Um, and then it goes, the little record goes into a pipe, right? And then it doesn't pop out again until up here by number seven. One of the first cha- one of the first things John and I did together, it might have been an O five or something, um, was that exact job, like how, can you connect it? How do you connect? How you do it? And it's a tough nut to solve, but maybe with the um city center kind of being thought about, um maybe there's some opportunities there to, to make something happen. Um, but yeah, to, to your point, I think that stands out to everybody and it's just been difficult to figure out, how do you, how do you do that? Um, we'll take that. And then the bike lane comment, uh, thank you for that. We'll kind of put that into our, into our thinking cap and that kind of ties back to our next thing, which was, how are we going to, how are we gonna go about making decisions about which things are important, right? And so I, I wanted to share these with you and then I want to show you what the public, so back to Carl's question from twenty minutes ago too. Um, we did get input on this from the public that I'll share as well. So, so we had, we have these factors, so connectivity, right? So that's one thing I think Christine was just talking about, is there a gap that this would fill? Um, that would help connect things. Cost was one thing we said might be important, you know, is it super expensive? Is it affordable? Demand, this kind of ties back to some of that fifteen minute city information I shared. You know, would, do we think it would be used highly? Um, if you, if you remember, if you took a look at the walk-in wheel plan, you'd see there was an attempt to look at bicycle travel demand in that based on sort of, I think, four factors. So we had sort of a heat map of where things uh would be most usable, kind of look at that. Ease of implementation. So some things that we might do are hard because say they affect the drainage system or we have to deal with three different agencies and they get complicated. And um, so those can make things a little harder to achieve and, and maybe make them a lower priority. Equity. So equity is, you know, is it, it's, it's not really, we're really thinking, um, there's kind of two things. There's geographic equity in the city, right? So are we, you know, serving every, all our citizens? Um, and then is it equitable in terms of um population, right? Is it, is it usable by everybody? Uh, a few more here, safety um is, do we have a high crash location that this would really help with? Uh, Tim Who, so I think I saw on the call, um, he's provided us some really good uh crash data that we're analyzing right now to see how that overlays with our, with our plan. Uh, key destinations, access to transit, that's a little fifteen minute city map as well. Um, stakeholder input and community support. So this one's a little funny because, you know, we had the twenty fifteen plan. We ran that through a public process that uh had community support. I think we're, you know, we're kind of refreshing that and saying, you know, have priorities changed, have things changed? Um, and then those are the ones we thought of and we were, we were looking for others, you know, so let me show you before I get your guys' input. Let me show you what um, oh, don't do that. Sorry. I'll pull this up again. Oh no. Be one second here. I inadvertently shut that photo. I'll reach, I'm going through my file system here. Take me two seconds. Pictures. Factors, okay. There we go. Okay, so uh, this was that same chart I just showed you. We had a big board sort of at our, our, at the open house. And we asked people to give us their input, right? And I'm gonna zoom in a little bit so we can see a little better. And I did a little summary here, right? So this is, this is the input we got from the public at our event. Um, you can see that safety um had ten, ten folks thought that was important. And then the next two were equity and connectivity. So filling gaps uh, serving different parts of the city and different populations and making things safer. Those were the top, the top three by far of um, of everybody. And then we had some comments over here, which I can zoom in a little more. Um, and we can, you can see, so these, I think it might have been even, Kevin probably knows better, might have been even a couple of the same people. So Santa Fe Underpass, this is that Little Dry Creek Trail. Like, hey, can we maintain it better? Can we get more patrols down there? More signs for walking safe, like next to the bike pass signs. So I think they were saying, you know, how do I get to where I need to go? Um, same person lighting and then key destinations, Broadway, food, drinks and entertainment and the restaurants in downtown. So, so those are what people wrote here. And then we had um a few other notes that um that Kevin kind of relayed to you. That's what the public thought so far. And I think our next steps here are to talk to you folks about what you think. And I was hoping we would, um, our plan is to make a little uh survey for the website and reach out to our list from both the twenty fifteen plan and people we connected with today um or on Saturday. And see if we can get a little more input on this from the public. So with that, I, I think I'd like to open it up to folks. As you think through those factors, what do you think are most important as you think about those problems? Now I'll put some, maybe I, maybe Nancy puts somebody on the spot.
Colin just came off mute.
Okay.
I, I did have a quick question. Was everyone uh only able to select one option? And, and that was then their selection or could they have selected as many as they want and really, you know?
So what we asked people, yeah, yeah, what we asked people to do um was to select their top three. And we originally were gonna use stickers and we just decided to use markers. I, people may have gotten a little more um whatever enthusiastic uh than that, but that's Yeah, that's how we, that's how we talk to them about um, about giving us input, is trying to give us your top three.
I, I think safety, again, from what Christine said, from, you know, what it's like being on a bike with cars flying by or walking and, and our tiny sidewalks in parts of the city, um, let alone, I mean, Broadway at least has some sort of width. I mean, some other areas in our town, you know, that I mean, have the tiniest little sidewalks. Um, whereas, you know, I think that's probably, you know, for me, top. And then the connectivity, you know, I've, I've taken that Dry Creek Trail. I was like, oh, cool. I'm gonna go down and come underneath. And I was like, I have no idea where to go. And I ran into a parking lot and then tried to get behind a building and then hit a curb and almost wiped out. And so, um, you know, that isn't necessarily, i- it's this great little place that just doesn't go anywhere. And so that connectivity to connect, you know, that one as well as all the other bike trails. The one on Clarkson is great. I use that one all the time. Um, you know, I'll take that down to Quincy and go over to the Highline Trail and, and you know, all of a sudden you're connected to the longest bike, bike paths in, in the state. And um, so there's some great potential for that connectivity. So for me, I won't even go to there. I'll go safety and connectivity.
Gotcha. Noel or Nancy, I guess Nancy's calling on people, but
You're fine.
No, I think, I think we met Noel at our event. Hi Noel.
Hello, yes, I came and looked at all of your signs and uh, and decided uh to save my comments until this evening. But uh, it was good to see the, the turnout at the event. Um, I do think connectivity is, is key when I think about going somewhere on, on a bike. If I have to stop and think about, well, how will I make it from this part of the trail to this part of the trail? And um, you know, for me, it needs to just be easy. You know, I get on at one point and it takes me as close to where I can go as possible. And either is, is safety for sure. Uh, I live near the Dartmouth bike lane and the only reason I use it is because uh from Broadway East, barely anyone parks in the parking spots. So I really am just ri- riding in the parking spots, not uh, not in the lane itself. Uh, so more protected lanes. I know they cost a lot more money, but I would, I would rather see uh fewer but protected lanes uh than more unprotected ones.
Got you, Noel. Hey, uh, one more, one addition to that. So we do, we do like to protect the lanes as well. And, and often what it comes down to is a trade-off between how the street gets used, right? So with Englewood being a built-out city and you have fixed widths a lot of your streets, if you found your protective lanes, you have to strip parking. And so that's a, that's a constant dialogue, I think, between the citizens and leadership about, about how to implement things. And so um, yeah, just, just something to think about. And, and I don't know if, maybe it's, maybe if you um in other cities we've worked in, if you can show a really good case um for use and safety and work with all the citizens kind of almost even in a one-on-one basis and get some understanding, you can make some progress there, but um a lot of times that's an uphill battle. But Dartmouth, Dartmouth is um Dartmouth is in the plan to be a protected bikeway in the future. And so what you see there is sort of a phase one implementation, right? Uh, to just get something going and, and To just get something going and and show some benefit. And I agree with you, like the parking volumes are so low. That it's like a big wide bike lane. Nancy, are you calling on people?
Yep, I'll do that. I see Judy, then it'll be Tim Whitney and then Colin again.
Okay.
So Judy.
Safety for sure. I did want to comment that that's. There's a number of things that I feel like going to safety and I think some of the people might have been referring to those. Some of those underpasses feel very unsafe. Because the lighting is so poor and, you know, unfortunately, there's a lot of people who, few, when I cut across from Bellevue Park. And head over to Mary Carter Greenway, you know, there's a lot of people, homeless people down there, the lighting's poor. It it feels not very safe. And I think that's what some of the people are referring to, whether you're walking or riding a bike. And then the other thing about safety, and then you referred to this early, earlier, and I mean, it might fit somewhere else, but. Wayfinding, I mean, the signage is terrible. So I can't tell you the number of people I've had to give directions to who get lost in Bellevue Park. Because they can't figure out how to get either across Santa Fe or even going in the other direction to hook up maybe with a. The Highline Canal because and we don't have any say over there, but certainly. On our side, you know, once you get across there, the signage is great, you know, they have big maps and you want to get to Bear Creek, you go this way. But getting through Bellevue Park over to there. And I think that's a safety issue because if people get lost. Then they're, you know, I, maybe this isn't a, an issue for young men, but for older ladies, I'm not going to stop some strange guy and ask where I'm going. You know, I get stopped all the time because I look harmless, so they'll ask me for directions. But, you know, it's just from a personal safety standpoint, signage, I think, is huge. So that wayfinding thing. And I think that would be fairly low cost. So that was my big thing for safety and also, and I think that ties in with connectivity, because if it's. Things are more connected, then they're more safe. You have more people, the more people you have using. This stuff, the safer it is for everybody. I mean, that's. A lot of the stuff that people talk about. In some of these areas, if you get it energized, then it naturally. You know, sort of gets the element that feels unsafe not to hang around. So those two would be my biggest. And of course, we have to take into a cost. So I'll at least give you another checkmark on cost because ultimately that's gonna. Be a big deal for us. We don't have. You know, infinite supply. So I, I think those would be my top three.
Great. I should, I should give you a little more nuanced about the prioritization too. So. I think the intent isn't to come up with a list of one through a hundred, right? And this is top one. I think the list is to group them into bins, right? So like these ten are pretty important and then you can sort those by cost and like. So what can we check off this year and what's left? And that's how I've been thinking about about how the outcomes of this are.
Okay, Tim. Yep, Tim.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for everything tonight. So it's super informative. I did have a question. When we talk about connectivity, we've been talking a lot about recreational connectivity. So connecting from one park to another park. Getting from the Greenway to another Greenway or park to a Greenway or of across the city, but we haven't really talked about. Getting from, you know, the bus to the light rail. As a connectivity means. So right now we're looking at recreational travelers, but we're not necessarily looking at work travelers. And I think that's one of those things that we really want to focus on too, is making sure that. If we look at that map, right? I think we could draw some socioeconomics from just the five minute, fifteen minute walking area. To actually what the access looks like. And if we look at our plan from Walkin Wheel. It seems like we're still kind of underserving. Getting the areas that are in the non fifteen minute or five minute zone. Actually, easier access. And I believe a comment earlier was made how treacherous Broadway was to walk. Well, it turns out that Broadway is one of those major corridors. Of public transportation, right? That's where you will catch the bus and connect to. Maybe another major station to catch the light rail or how do you get from Broadway to the light rail? Making sure that that's an easy thing. So people can move to jobs. And actually like get around from any part of our city to other parts of whether it's our city or Denver or Littleton where their job might be.
Yeah, those are great comments. So so one of the things we thought about in that was this like serve key destinations and access to transit. So that that's trying to think about. Employment centers or medical or those kind of things. And so that's one of our factors. And maybe it's, it sounds like that's, you think that's important. And then. Back to the underserved piece, I think that's a great nuance that we should talk through is. So should we be trying to make investments in places where the five and fifteen minute? Land uses are and like make it easier? Or should we also, should we be looking at geographic equity and saying? You know, these parts of the city don't have anything and we should do some things to make it easier there. And I think that's a high level kind of policy decision. I'd love some. Some more discussion about if we have time.
Colin.
I mean, I think we can, there's a couple of. Agencies that develop sociability indexes. That, and this is just based on Chris, what you were just saying and Tim's input also. So I think. Overly in that, I don't know that it necessarily has to. Be in a place where there's not a five or ten or five or fifteen minute overlap because some of those places might not be our most vulnerable people, but someplace that have. Those vulnerabilities also. I don't know that it has necessarily be just where there's not some sort of coverage right now. So maybe some, I think C, CDC's got one. As well as, I think FEMA has one now also. And. There's other couple, Denver's developing one, I think, encompasses some of the surrounding areas as well. So that's one other thing to incorporate potentially. The circulator also, I think, I don't know how that ties into the wheels and trails. You know, I think that that could be something that also supplements some of that. I mean, I think we've got this awesome facility that maybe isn't. Utilized quite as efficiently yet as as it could be. Yeah, then. Oh, go, you go.
No, go get Colin. I'm listening.
And then the last thing I had is one of the things that you mentioned was, you know, we're, we're built out city. All of our streets are set. Well, we also have some super wide streets. That maybe could go on a diet, right? And be reconfigured in ways. To make them. More functional for what we need them to be now. You know, does Clarkson need to be this huge wide street or can we narrow it up a little bit, slow people down a little bit? Still provide those protected lanes and and some of those other things. So, you know, as much as we're not building new streets, we still, I think, have opportunities for those existing streets.
So a couple of things. Could you, could you say the words again? So the thing the CDC and FEMA has, what was that called?
The Socio, Socio Vulnerability Index, SOVI. Socio, S O C I O vulnerability.
Yep. Okay, that's great. So we can like kind of get on that and take a look. I, I thought that sounded pretty interesting. And then the circulator, right? So so when I was just showing those fifteen minute city maps again. So yeah, this is about walking and and. And a fifteen minute walk is pretty close to a five minute bike. It's more like a twenty minute walk to a five minute bike. But this is, this is pretty indicative of a five minute bike trip if you had the facilities to do it. The thing that the fifteen minute city, if you did like, if we did a full blown fifteen minute city analysis. It's really about mode, right? So whatever mode you use can go further, right? So transit goes further than walking and. And on and on. And so as part of this scope, we aren't digging that deep into that. And we just kind of want to look at walking and and a little biking first. But yeah, that is a, an important thing. And that circulator and all those services would feed into, you know, you can, you have a bigger shed. Shed of travel. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about, you're exactly right, is that. There are a lot of pretty wide local streets. In Inglewood, there were, that was the city standard at the time. It might be forty two feet wide or even maybe forty four. And if we have enough width, there are things you can do. To put, say, bike lanes in that don't have parking impacts or, you know, you have width to use or you can do some, some diet, some road diet, things, some traffic calming things that are pretty effective. So. I, I appreciate those comments and I think those are things that we'd look at and and they did factor into. Why some of these lines were chosen in the, in that original plan. Go ahead, Nancy.
I don't see any other hands. At the moment.
Okay.
I got a comment. I have an electronic hand. You mentioned the. Little Dry Creek Trail. It just goes from Clarkson and over to the. Basically, the city, city center over there. That's a pretty important path, really. It goes right through down the southern downtown area. And you could go. Connected into Floyd and go west on Floyd down to. Whatever that street is, it goes over to Cushing Park. And then that connection to the, the trail it goes through. That could be a pretty, pretty well-used trailer.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. You know, if you, if you do, I didn't pull an aerial up, but if you do look, you'll see that. There was an attempt with some of this development in here to put wide sidewalks in. And try to start making that connection. And that was the idea with this project ten. Was a wayfinding piece, not infrastructure pieces. Is how do you get from this end of the Dry Creek Trail up to Cushing Park and up to the the next piece? But your point is well taken, Carl, that. You know, if we can connect here to here in a way that makes sense to people. And is safe, like this is a really good. That's a really good route through the city. And I think we just have to be. Thoughtful about how we think about intersection crossings and those sorts of things.
No, Floyd is really underused. It's, there's not a lot of traffic on that. So that would be a good spot.
So Maria knows, knows more about this. But there is, I believe, an request for proposals out for a design. For the intersection of Floyd and the Lottie. To sort of, and and for Floyd from Broadway West to do a road diet. To put in some bike lane facilities and to kind of narrow that up. And. Maria, do you, do you want to share anything about that with, with the group?
Yeah, that's exactly right, Chris. So we're looking at the intersection. I'm moving my hand, which you guys can't see, but the intersection of Floyd and the Lottie, and then we'll add on street bike lanes. From basically the Civic Center on the west all the way to essentially Broadway. So that would be the intent of that project in twenty twenty two.
Great. Yeah. So that'll be a really, that's actually a really exciting project. And Floyd. To to Carl's point, Florida was an important project in the twenty fifteen plan. And we have that. This map just shows completed or not completed. We actually have a spreadsheet that has a little more nuance that says like, is it in progress? Is it, does it have a concept design? And those sort of things. So the status of that is a Floyd is that, you know, it's, it's moving forward towards implementation. Okay, are there?
Another, one, one other quick comment. The, the rail trail and the Flat River Trail. I don't do, I, I, I don't do a lot of biking on those, but I do a lot of walking on, on not rail trail, but. The, the Flat River Trail and you get. People going on their bikes like thirty five, forty miles an hour down those trails. They, they're trying to do a speed race or something. And they're, they're only what I think eight foot wide or something. Maybe ten foot at the most. Combining the walking and. Bicycle is, is pretty hazardous.
Carl, that's, that's a good point. I believe there, the regional trail standard, I think is.
Yeah, I muted there.
Oh, there I am. Sorry. Thank you. Yeah, I have, so Carl, that, that's a good point. I think those trails are twelve feet wide. This is what I was saying. They're probably wider than I think, but we've been doing a lot of work. So with bike. Shared use trail design and e-bikes are becoming a lot more prevalent and their speeds are much higher. Even with the sort of restrictions on, say, the faster bikes. There's a lot of speed differential on hills and a lot of mixing of pedestrian bicycles. And I think. That's one of the things that the, the trail designers like me. Are starting to try to address either through separating some of those. We're trying to get a little more width or provide more or definition about who belongs where. And there have been. Well, you would probably believe it, Carl, because you've seen people rip it through, but there have been a few fatalities. With bicyclists and pedestrian collisions. And so it's a serious thing and it's something we take seriously. And I think that'd be. Back to the factors that would be safety would be important.
And Mr. Whitney?
Yeah, I just wanted to. Ask about visual interest when we look at these walking paths. Are we considering the visual interest of the walking path? I know Floyd. I just not too much personal information, but I ran a marathon last year kind of through the streets of. Inglewood and I ran that Floyd trail a lot and it, or the, on Floyd behind Walmart and. Hobby Lobby and everything. And it is just boring to look at. Type of thing compared to walking through the houses. If you look at the trail on ten. You know, you go into a neighborhood a lot quicker than you're going to be in industrial. Or if you walk on Floyd. And then around, you basically see two brick walls. Right. So when considering like visual interests, I think people think the walking is actually shorter than even if it is the same distance. And I think we see that in cities as well, when you're walking on a city block versus an industrial block, the city block will feel shorter. And just, I, I wasn't sure if we're looking at that. And I think that a walkable city is a book, I can't recall the author, mentions the importance of that. As well. So just. Kind of throwing that in as a thing we might want to consider is actually how much people would want to walk it.
Gotcha. Yeah, like walking along. Windermere north of the, of the rail station is kind of a drag, right? And yeah, go in where places are more interesting, we might get more traction. So that's, that's point well taken, Tim.
Thank you.
So anyone, anyone else? I know we're close to time.
I don't see anyone yet.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, I will. I'll just, I'm going to stop sharing so we can see each other a little better. And then I'll just tell you what happens next. So we're taking all this input from, from you and from the public and from staff. Going through the plan, we're gonna take those prioritization factors and think about which ones are the most important. Start breaking projects into more real adjustable chunks and we're going to do some of that, that internal technical work over the next three, four weeks. And then we're going to come back to you all. I think it was October fourteenth, if I remember right. In three weeks. So we have to work fast. Yeah, October fourteenth, Thursday, October fourteenth, we have the E-Tech meeting that we're. Going to talk to you all again and show you what our thoughts are on projects and prioritization. And hopefully we'll tie that to mapping. So it's kind of easy to see. What we're, what we're talking about and and all that. So. Yeah, that's, that's next steps. And I really do appreciate, this is a good group. I really appreciate you all taking the time. I know it's hour and a half's kind of long. I didn't think we'd go an hour and a half, but. It ended up an hour and a half. I guess you fill whatever they give you, right? And I appreciate it. And if any other final thoughts or comments with, other than that, I'll let Nancy kind of, kind of close the meeting.
Chair Austin.
You're muted. There you go, Michelle. Just a, just a quick thought. Have you talked to the people who own the bike stores?
So we, we did in twenty fifteen. In fact, I bought a bike at Any and All Bikes. I bought a, my first fat bike I bought from them. We had a pretty good interface with, with them. That was the main bike store we talked to.
Right.
But yeah, we. We, we got some, some input about where they think. Good routes are and riding and those things. Do you have suggestions for some other, some other folks?
Well, obviously, any and all bikes right there on, on South Broadway is a pretty big store and I've purchased things. There myself, but. You know, you could go to, you could broaden the reach to a little bit into Denver and stuff like that. I just think that they, they're kind of like the experts, that it would be a shame if we didn't. You know, stop in and at least get their input. That's all. I just think that they, they're kind of like the experts, that it would be a shame if we didn't, you know, stop in and at least get their input, that's all.
That's, yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, we will um, yeah, we'll, we'll reach out to Any and All Bikes and a few others. And I think the other thing we'll try to pull in is, we found that's uh the Strava heat map data is kinda useful. So I don't know if any of you use that, but um it catches, it doesn't catch all bicyclist types, but it catches, it gives you a pretty good idea of patterns. Of where people are going and riding, where the density is. And I think that's another thing we'll kinda pull into this as we move forward.
Okay, and Judy has her hand up too.
Judy.
You know, I did share, so I'm on the um Inglewood uh Chamber of Commerce. And I did share that we were having this meeting with David Carroll, who's our executive director. And if you would like input from the businesses, um he would be more than happy to work with you. On getting a survey out also to the, you know, he he'd be more than happy to work with you to get a survey out to business owners. Um and do whatever the chamber can do to assist you on this as well. Just wanted to let you know.
Yeah, thanks Judy. I think um, I think that's exactly why we wanna get our our web materials up and like a web survey. And then I would love this, uh this group, you guys have a lot of contacts and and groups of people you talk to. And if it's okay with you, I'd love to send that information to these groups and you can forward um to your lists as you see fit. If, is that okay?
If you'll just run it through, through me.
Through you, yep.
Or the Public Works staff. Um and then we'll get it out to our, our individual commission members.
That'd be great. Yeah, so you should see something. I I know Nancy and I are working on that. Um Nancy, you expected something for me today, but you didn't get it, but we'll get something tomorrow and we'll get a, get that webpage up and get it moving.
Sounds good. So Chair Austin, I'm gonna turn the rest of the meeting back over to you. I think we're, we should be a commissioner's choice.
Yes, um according to my agenda, it's staff's choice first.
Oh, okay.
But that's okay, we can go in any order you you please.
No staff choice. John, do you have anything?
I have nothing further tonight. Thank you.
Okay, anyone from Public Works staff?
Not for me, thank you.
Um, okay.
I would just remind uh the Planning Commission members, the meeting that Chris referenced for E-Tech is also a joint meeting. With the Planning Commission as well, but it'll be on a Transportation Advisory Meeting Night. So uh you'll be getting.
Thursday, right?
Yes, yes. So you'll be getting more information from, I believe, Michelle in Public Works um staffs that, that commission.
Yeah, we'll send out a notice, so you'll see that come through as a Inglewood Transportation Advisory Committee meeting for October fourteenth.
Okay, great.
That's all I had.
Okay, uh do we have Dugan with us, Attorney's Choice?
Uh Dugan is no longer with the city, but we do have a new uh Deputy City Attorney joining the city next Monday. So she will be staffing the Planning Commission. And I'm assuming if the Transportation Advisory Commission has an attorney's present, then she will be uh attending that meeting as well.
Okay, all right, then it's Commissioner's Choice. Uh Judy?
No, I've said enough tonight, thanks.
Okay, you know, my computer is doing funny things. Uh Nancy, would you mind calling on the people? Cause I can only see sure the few here.
Sure. I'm gonna go as I see people. So Noel?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Colin?
Uh, nothing also. Thanks, E-Tech for coming. And let's see you guys at your meeting.
Uh Neil?
I just wanted to chime in and say this, this is a wonderful presentation. I really appreciate it. Um it covered a lot of territory, uh some of it we'd already addressed at our E-Tech meetings. Um but I think this went into a little bit more in depth uh than we typically get get an opportunity to. So this will be great and I think it's a great launching pad for our next meeting and beyond. That's it.
Greg?
Yeah, thanks, everybody. No additional thoughts or comments from me.
Tim?
Yeah, just thank you. No additional comments.
Carl?
Uh, no comment.
Uh Kate Fuller?
Um, no comment. Thank you, everyone.
Meg?
Nothing for me tonight, thanks.
Yeah, I think that brings it back to you, Michelle.
I have no further comments either, except for to just say thank you so much. It's been um, we've had a busy night tonight with a lot of information and I appreciate all of staff's work and everyone's comments and things like that. I apologize, my computers are doing a little funky things tonight. I was late getting, switching from the first meeting to the sec meeting. And anyway, whatever, technology sometimes is not my friend, but that's the way it goes sometimes. So anyway. Um, I don't see no other um comments. Uh this meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
You go.
Thanks, everyone.